Mike?
Yes.
You will explain, there'll be a brief pause, right?
Yes. So you can put on pause.
Well, so that way the people watching the video won't be coming back.
It won't be, it won't be considered an edit.
An edit, yeah, we have completely unedited.
Just have a piece of paper up there.
On the back in five.
Getcha.
Well, when they get back on tape, they will explain what they did.
Maybe you can stay and have a commercial.
You could, Donna.
No, no, I could be the commercial, that's true. I could be the, hello, Dan, how are ya?
Good way to talk up the dancing stuff.
Yeah, commercial.
I could do that.
Ten minute commercials.
We wanna know about Dunbarton, Dunbarton history.
Infomercial.
We are presenting Donna Dunbarton.
We have another request, borrow our Daffodil program. We've had like twelve towns implement our Daffodil program.
You're charging, right?
No, we give them, we share our Excel sheets, we share everything.
Well, even the police department, I got a, we got a request today, Lee, they wanna know about how we do our revenue sharing when we do details.
Uh huh.
Because they go for new vehicles and they get shot down. And so what we do, some of the detail money goes to a vehicle fund. And it's been working well, and it offsets some of the price increases that we get, or the huge prices for a new vehicle. Where wants the, a former police officer wants to use what we've been doing. So as a compliment, Chief.
It is a compliment, that's how we look at it. And we didn't, we gave them our exit, we had everything down to science after ten years, we were such pros at it.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, the Dunbarton Board of Selectment meeting for Thursday, June ninth, at seven PM. It is now seven PM. All three selectmen present. The town administrator present. Recording for the citizens of Dunbarton, Mr. Robert Martel. And his sidekick, Mr. Leo Martel. I'd like to just take an adjournment for this meeting. We'll get some water penetrated to the construction site. We're gonna take about ten to fifteen minutes, we're gonna take a little break, the selectmen are gonna walk over there and be escorted by the library administrator, and we're gonna take a look, see what happened this morning. Okay, so, gentlemen, if you take a, take a little walk with us. Paper cores on? We're gonna bring this meeting back to order, we took about twelve minutes.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve. I feel my accurate prediction was out of the box. Okay, I have some minutes for last meeting, gentlemen. Dave, you have mine, I believe?
I was gonna let you suffer from that.
I'll make a motion to approve the May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two minutes. As amended, there was one small change. One second. I'm gonna abstain. Any further discussion on those minutes?
Nope, that will move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'm gonna open up for public comment now. I'll start with Bob, anything for public comment?
No. Yeah, I'd just like to thank Bob and Fred Mullins for filling in those away, keep the videos slow so people can still see what's happening.
Okay, so acknowledge, thank you. Donna, anything for public comment?
Just follow up from last week, I talked about the deceased cruiser, the FD one. And I made some calls, I called three different auto salvage yards. And I'll give low to high here on the, on the office. Bow Auto Parts, all of them said that there were issues with it being a police cruiser, that a lot of parts were drilled out for lights and stuff like that. And it reduced the number of things they could sell. And the engine being dead, those were things that went against, you know, pricing. But anyways, Bow Auto Parts offered two hundred, Peabird's offered six hundred, and Central Auto Recyclers offered eight.
That was a no brainer. Do we need a motion to move that?
Aye, sweet shit, yeah. I'll make a motion to go to who, Central Auto Parts?
Yeah, Central Auto Recyclers.
For eight hundred dollars.
I'll second that. Any discussion on that? How soon can that happen?
Um, next time I'm in town, probably a week after next, I won't be here next week.
Okay.
Personal things, but I'm sure you'll be back a week after that, and days that I'm here, I'll call and make arrangements to have it towed over.
Okay, all in favor, Jim?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Forward, Chief.
Thanks for following up on that.
Oh, no problem.
Okay.
Figured I'd do that before I came in here for a junkyard permit.
There you go.
And believe me, I bought it just like junkyards. All right, I'm gonna close public comment, go back to town business, and we have Donna Dunn from the Start of Awareness Committee.
Yes, hi.
And Donna, you got the floor?
I have three items.
Okay.
Don't worry, they'll be quick. Um, I would, I think I've mentioned this before, that you would all turn around and look at that big mural on the wall right there? Yes, do you see who photographed it?
Bernice Perry.
Correct, she now has a historical marker in New Hampshire for her. She was the first female pilot in New Hampshire, as well as the first commercial female pilot in New England. She has a volume of work behind her that is amazing, so she has her own historical marker now. And to the best of my knowledge, we're the only ones that have a collage of her aerial photographs. When she died, she, in nineteen ninety-six, she left all of her tens of thousands of negatives and prints to the Milford Historical Society where she lived most of her life. I contacted them five or six years ago to find out if there were any Dunbarton ones in them, because we have, this, you can see they were cut up and collaged together in the old fashioned way. We have some of those in the, what is it, like eleven, uh, twelve, ten by ten size, in the vaults. But we don't have the complete set, and if they're out there, I'd like to buy them for Dunbarton if they don't cost too much money. So I've got it open, she said it would be years before they get through tens of thousands, but in the meantime, you might wish to hang this on the wall beside that, remind everybody how important that is, or how unusual that is.
Basically, for the public, it's a, it's a picture of her, and it's a news article about her, and I think it's a, it's a picture of the marker. I think that's a great idea, gentlemen, do we have consensus?
I think we do.
Okay. I think that's wonderful. Where did you get the picture, Donna?
Uh, it was a newspaper article, so I clicked it out, and by the way, that's archivally framed. It's got a UV behind the glass, and that's got archival matting behind it.
So it will stay for a while?
It will stay, it's newspaper print, but it will stay well.
That'd be an interesting feature, just that maybe we can get a picture of that, Lee, and just put it on the website, just so let people know that Black Heritage map a little bit, that'd be an interesting thing to put on a website.
Now, this one's dated nineteen forty-one, did she have Dunbarton in any other years, do you know?
They, they don't know, they have tens of thousands of photos to catalog, and they haven't even decided how they're gonna do it, they don't have the money for it.
This is painstaking work, I'm sure.
That is painstaking work, and I've been through the town reports for a section of years around that, that time period, and I can't find any discussion of it. That used to hang over at the library, and I talked to, and I remember, somebody turned me on to who moved it from the library over here, and I said, was there anything on the back of it? And they said nothing. So, you know, my curiosity wants me to take it off the wall and see what we've got behind it, but I've been told there's nothing behind it for what it's worth.
Cause this was the library at one time, too.
Maybe that's why.
This was, yeah.
Yeah, this was the library.
Yeah, but it was, yes, but it was over in that building, I think they took it with them and then sent it back over. This was hanging in that building, over there.
I don't know either.
It's a, I think it's a great piece of Dunbarton history.
It sure is, and at some point, it wouldn't be bad to get some UV film on it, you can hire people to do that, because it's
It's time to yell one out on YouTube.
Well, it's, it's a lot less, it has solved, as Ken Swayze said, many, many planning board issues.
Oh, really?
Yes, and we use it for research all the time, I've been able to locate footprints of barns that nobody even knew were there. Because, hell, it's eighty years ago.
So maybe the planning board can pay to have that.
It might not be, I'm just saying, it's not, it wouldn't be that terribly expensive.
Let us, let us know, if you can get some estimates.
I'll give it an estimate, okay. The second thing is, the Historical Awareness Committee is applying, after talking to the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire last year, they came back to us and reviewed some of the material that we sent them. And they think we have a very good case for putting a Black Heritage Trail in at Page's Cemetery, Pacifio Page. Now, there's a process to it, we have a lengthy application to fill out, I'm gonna give you a copy of that, just in case you wanna see what's in it. These are some samples of some of the Black Heritage Trails markers, and here's some samples of the wording that's on them. Don't pay attention to that hundred and fifty, I'll explain that, but, um, these are all different. Just for some history, it started out as the Portsmouth Black Heritage Trail, and eventually grew to the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire. And now there are towns, all, not all of New Hampshire, but a good number of towns in New Hampshire that have started researching their Black history, and have had markers put in there. And we actually, you have to have source documents, I mean, you have to have photocopies of it. You have, you, yeah, I can't, it can't be the history written in some book, okay? It has to be source documents, and we have a lot of source documents. And so we're going to go through the process. We need written permission, and we've already met with the cemetery trustees, for, from whoever owns the land, to place something there. So they're going, they're drafting a letter, which should be saying that, yes, they're approving this, they would like to see this done. And they have used ground penetrating radar, so they know where and where we can't put the marker. Cause we'd like to put it behind Pacifio and his family. What the wording is gonna be yet, we don't know. We get to draft stuff, we're limited to a certain number of words, they do the final editing. If they, the cemetery trustees are drafting something, I thought it would be a good idea to put on the bottom of it carbon copy Board of Selectment, and have all the trustees sign it. This is where it gets funny for me, who actually owns the land? People, some people have deeds, plots
Correct.
all there, so you have hundreds of people that own that land, and what they don't, isn't owned by them, by default is owned by who? You, but the trustee's manager?
The town of Dunbarton.
Okay, so, should it be a letter from you two, saying that it's cemetery lands, or is it okay if the trustees write the letter and they all sign it?
Having two letters with like a double barrel shotgun, you have both handles.
That would be wonderful, okay?
If you could just draft what you think needs to be said, and Lee can put on a letterhead for us, we can support you that way. I gotta, remember the public wants to make a comment.
I was just gonna say, the town owns the land, all you own is the burial rights, you don't own the land that you're in.
Well, actually, that's not true, there's four hundred and seventy-one plots out there that are owned by people called perpetual care. Those are owned by the people that bought that square.
They have actual deeds.
Four hundred and seventy-one plots, that's why.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you what I read from the state, that you own the rights to burial,
Yep.
but you don't own the property.
That's after the four seventy-one.
Yes, they adopted
The original one was
The right to enter, it's called.
Yeah.
And it's, we own the land.
Under perpetual care, is that what you use, no?
No, perpetual care was before, and since, maybe twenty years ago, we
But their money's exhausted, right?
No, it's not, we have twenty, uh, still almost thirty thousand dollars in there. So they're doing their due diligence and withdrawing interest, but at about around twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a year, but we have to spend down the interest, and then petition the courts, cypre, to liquidate the rest of the money for, for maintenance, and then we will be responsible for the, all of the
I don't, then, maybe I stand corrected, but I'll say that my research was very recent, and that's how I found out that the plots that are there aren't, and even, and we're talking about a cemetery that's been there for forty, fifty years, or more than that.
No.
Cause I'm older than that. Seventy-five years, probably.
Yeah.
And, so, I just recently went through this, that's why I, from what I understand, you own the burial rights, but you don't actually own the property, so I, you know, it could be that prior years, uh, maybe a hundred years ago?
Geez, yeah.
See, hundreds of years ago, I've actually had seen stacks of them. When you bought, you bought that piece of land, you had a deed of right to it, and you could will it to someone else. You know, you didn't have to be buried in it, you could sell it, you could will it, it was a piece of property, it was an asset, and it was listed in wills as an asset. Then they started getting rid of that, and they said, this is a problem. Now, maybe there's some arcane law on the book that made all of those expire and fall off the cliff, but we have our own records here, deeds from the town to this person, you own this piece of land.
So what's, what's the issue? You can't do that anymore.
That's correct. The issue is, you can't.
Right, inter.
So you technically own it now, so, and they have complete control over it, so let's get a letter from both of you.
Yeah.
And if you would, I'll tell you who to address it to, but give me the original, we're not mailing anything yet, because it's gonna take us a while to put our package together.
So we, we get time, but things, I think we're consensus, all in support of this.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, as a, as part of the Cemetery Trustee Board, we're all in consensus, consensus with this as well, so, we're fully supporting.
Donna, does this have anything, just from my own knowledge? There's a Black family that lived on the road that we were looking to widen there last year, Guinea Road down here.
There were, a settlement of twenty, maybe as many as thirty people that lived on Guinea Road, and how that
So is this gonna, is this gonna
This is all gonna tie in.
That's what I was thinking, because
We're doing actually two things, okay? We are actually putting together, and we talked to the Black Heritage guy when he was here, we're putting together the Dunbarton Black Heritage Trail. As a matter of fact, we just put our first sign up at Bailey's Corner, for explaining Bailey's Corner, and because there was, there were slave people living there and working there, and that's how Josiah Bailey got so damn much money, we have our own little emblems that we're putting on the corner of any of the historical signs that we put up that are related to our Black Heritage Trail, they're going to get a medallion on the front, that says Black Heritage Trail of Dunbarton. We eventually will have our own map. Nobody in the state has done one that we're aware of yet, Milford is getting close, and we're gonna try to model it after theirs. As a matter of fact, Black Heritage said that it might be a good idea for them to come up with some sort of template that all the communities can join in on, so we're not all reinventing the wheel, you know? Milford does, they're actually having Heritage Trail walks, now whether they have a map and a self-guided one, we have enough sites in town to have that, and we've been working on this for fifteen years. So we're not, we're not Johnny Come Latelys to this, we have a lot of information put together.
I think as board, I can say that we definitely would support you here.
Okay, perfect.
And it is, any, any letters, any letters you need from the board.
All right, I'll let you move this along.
The cemetery trustees, I think we
Yeah, oh no, he was, he was there, he heard the whole spiel.
So Lee, you got that for action and prepared as needed? That was number two, number three?
Number three is, I have come across an old piece of Dunbarton history. And I thought that was all I had, until today.
Now, Dave hasn't been here that long, has he?
No. And today, someone actually came up with another piece that they wanna donate, I wanna donate this to the fire department. And some of them know what it is, but not everybody knows what it is, but it's in a display case, and there's now gonna be two things, and I'd like to present it to the fire department, I already checked with Fred, he's gonna help me, before the barbecue. Not at twelve, but you know, like eleven, eleven thirty.
Before it kicks off?
Yeah, and put it in a, in a case over in the corner, so people can see it but can't touch it, and we'd love to have one of you guys there.
I think we could be there.
That'd be wonderful.
What's the barbecue date, do you remember, it's on the sign, June twelfth?
No, twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth?
Sunday, June twenty-sixth.
Sunday.
Tickets bind the nineteenth, if you want to eat.
Sunday, June twenty-sixth. No, at the end of the, the second time.
Yeah, the first, the first serving is twelve, but Fred said if we did this, like, eleven fifteen, that would be good.
That way people can have a consider.
Right, and, and we can put a sign over it, and I can do a little display.
What's your twelve or six?
Twelve to two, and three.
Three, five, I think.
Five, and I, I haven't got any tickets yet, you got your tickets yet?
I got mine.
I'm gonna get there before he does, so.
I had to buy two tickets.
Okay, Donna.
They're usually that good, you get two.
That's it, that's all I have.
Donna, thank you so much for what you do.
And I sent you a picture of the wording.
Okay. We're gonna go right into the mailboxes, the thing is, the agenda was small, but the mailboxes is huge, so.
Do you have one more thing to add?
Oh, it's me, yeah, okay. If we call last week on the Kelsey Road, I said it was a work in progress.
Yeah.
Well, we made a little more progress on it. First of all, Dave, we've got a tentative acknowledgement that Kelsey Road, the changing of those four poles, relocation, we picked up by the utilities, by the Unitile.
You have a copy in there?
I gave a copy of the letter. Tomorrow, the road agent will be meeting with the representatives of Unitile to isolate the exact location and determine which has to be done, there may be have some tree trimming to be done. I explained to the road agent, and he's in complete agreement with me, some of these improvements will be made regardless of whether there's a subdivision there or not. The pending subdivision.
Mike, what if, what if you need more than four moved during?
The thing is, that was the, that was the road agent's initial take on it, originally his assessment. It's the three poles at the beginning for roadway widening, and then the major pole, which is restricted our plumbing access, and effective plumbing for larger trucks has been the one in the turnaround, the turnaround was created about five years ago.
I'm concerned with the two right across from the log home halfway. If we don't move those poles, we'll be widening the road towards their house, and it sits virtually on the street as it is.
If you do have concerns, we can talk to Jeff first thing in the morning, but he's gonna meet with them initially.
Okay.
Yeah, and so
It's only within five feet of the right of way right now.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that if we wind the road, we should try and stay away from their residents if possible, because it's gonna double the traffic on the road.
Right, right. But the thing is, I don't wanna sign up for more work than what's actually required, and the thing is, I'm not the subject matter expert, I'm gonna rely upon the road agent for his guidance here.
Is Mark Andrews gonna be there from Dunbarton?
The thing is, Mark, that was a, that was an action item by the Dunbarton, by the Unitile. I circumvented the Unitile, and I told, asked Jeff to also invite the telephone company, as, just to make sure they get the invite, I don't wanna be having to drop through the
Now, the poles are being moved by Unitile, but from what I understood from going to those meetings, that there's a substantial cost from the telephone company as well.
No, the thing is, the telephone company has not determined the cost, those were just, the cost of the listed were just the poles.
Right, but I'm saying, they, they have a substantial cost in there.
To, to rewire?
To, yeah, they normally charge a couple thousand a pole at least.
The thing is, we'll probably determine that tomorrow.
Okay.
But the thing is, it's a work in progress, and we're making, we're going in the right direction, in the right direction, we're trying to save, what it does is, before the planning board, is for the, for the, for the public, I'll just say there's a subdivision application by an applicant, and there was a discussion that some poles, there were some road improvements needed to be done, which included removing telephone poles, relocating them to facilitate road improvements. Well, we found out through his attorney, did some case law, and some, looking through some regulations, that when it comes to safety issues regarding road improvements, the bill, the, the party responsible is the utility, not the applicant, not the town. And we shared that information with the utility company, I didn't start at a low level, I started at a very high level, and it trickled down a little bit, and they acknowledged it, it is their safety issue, and they're gonna step up to the plate and move, relocate four poles. When, we're talking about anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars per pole they were charging us. So, there's a potential savings for the applicant, whether he does a subdivision or not, because we were gonna keep that in what we call the exaction fee, part of it, and he may save some dollars, and it's usually as, at the current ratio, it's a two to one savings, this town will save twice as much as the applicant. So it's a win-win for the applicant to help in the subdivision, it's a win for the town. And it's a win, more than anything else, for the residents who currently live there and will live there in the future, because it'll facilitate plumbing to the road, and a little more, two cars can get by without having one pull over. And Dave, I think, Dave is, lives on that road, you know exactly what I'm talking about. He's on, he's tried to run me off a few times, no, I only can't. But it's narrow, the thing is, when I, I pass Dave on the road, and one actually has to pull over to facilitate travel, and those will be improvements we've made, and I, I, I just, for the record, I applaud the applicant's attorney for bringing it to our attention, because the road agent initially made contact with the utility company, and they basically gave us lip service, in the sense that they were gonna give us a nice sweet bill. And so I'll leave it at that, and it's a work in progress, and, but the only thing is, I don't have anything other than an email, so I, I'm a little, I'm cautiously optimistic, but I wanna make sure it happens, so we're gonna be monitoring that, and it's still a work in progress. Okay, that's my update, gentlemen, any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Now I'll go right to the mailbox items. Okay, I have here, first item is a police department application for the enforcement grant for the OHRV, that's where they help out with the the Hopkins Everett OHRV park, they've done it for several years. By, it allows us to patrol it and get some, a little bit extra money to help offset our patrolling costs. And I believe, I need a signature, please?
Motion.
I need a motion to accept the grant, and I also need some signatures.
You wanna make the motion?
Yeah, if you would be so kind.
Oh, you want me to?
Oh, I'll make it, okay. The thing is, I'd like to recommend that we approve the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three OHRV grant application, the amount of eighteen hundred dollars for patrolling at the RV park off Ray Road.
Well, second motion.
Any discussion on this further? We've done this before, and it's, it's, it helps offset some of our costs, in case we get any calls down there, we're down there, and we're getting paid some money for that.
We don't need to sign, or just one?
I, I believe it's, uh, just me.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All aye. Lee, I'm gonna let you look at that, there's like a thousand, thousand pages in there, and I don't wanna just waste everyone's time going through that, if you could, help me identify that. Okay, we gotta, if you recall, last week, there was a complaint day regarding, two weeks ago, pumping wetlands along frontage of Route one sixty-three Grapevine Road. We got some clarification on that, Lee, and could you tell me who was notified and who was not notified?
Um, I guess, um, the person pumping the water approached the fire chief and the road agent to get permission, cause it was on the pull-off by the fire hydrant, and they did give him permission to do that. It's very common for developments and that need to control dust, to utilize any water body in the near, in the area to lower the dust, or control some of the dust. And then this individual came and complained through the office, so it wasn't until Jeff brought it to our attention that they did in fact have permission. Information was conveyed, the lady's primary question was, when will it stop, and will it continue, that type of thing, and Jeff had said that they were just in, in the process of putting down the base coat, and once that would be down, and the Zachary Drive extension, that it should come to a stop. And I have not received a call in a week and a half since
And I, I understood the emails went out and explained in the store, too?
They were, yeah, and then the Conservation Commission were also included in the email, correspondent.
I'll copy the correspondent's gentleman's in the inbox if you wanna read it. Okay? Dave, I don't, I think you
I don't say, I don't.
Okay. Okay, that was just an update on that. And then chief also, chief also, fire chief gave us some
Actually, the Conservation Commission chairman gave us the fact sheet on
Intimate water withdrawals and surface waters.
Correct.
And just basically, it's the rules and regulations, you know, from the Department of Environmental Services. It's just in the fact sheet, so it talks about that. A few instructions to it. Okay, next item. Okay, we've had some logging on a property adjacent to the transfer station. The transfer, Woody, the transfer station manager was concerned that they were probably exceeding, going too close to the property line. I understand the area was been staked out, the person has appropriate permits, and he's logging this property as he sees fit. It will not impact the town property at all.
It shouldn't, no.
Yeah, and so that was just brought up, and it's, Woody, got that information too?
What about him directing, going for checking the woodland buffer?
Uh, the woodland buffer would be on the town land, Dave, an owner of a property can convert a wooded lot into field.
I understand all that, I'm wondering if Woody understands it, cause he was contacting the state to check and see about the woodland buffer.
Oh.
For the transfer station.
That would be something that he has to check for D, for the, is it, some surface systems, where the location of the transfer station is?
I'm not sure, but I would think that he would come and talk with us before he was checking with a state agency.
The, I, if there is some kind of easement, or some kind of buffer requirement for that transfer, our transfer station.
It'd be on our
It would be on our, I wonder if it's on our deed, or I hadn't thought to look at it.
I don't know, I just wish he would have contacted us before going to reach out to the state.
Yeah, because the forester was involved in that intent, the owner has come in and submitted a supplemental, which was converted to a new intent, and the board of assessors have signed it, so the owner is legal in all areas. As far as the hundred-foot buffer, the hundred-foot buffer would have to be on the town land entirely, not in a butter's land, cause then the butter can't
I'm not saying it
What's the question?
So
Woody reached out
Yep.
to state agency, without coming to us first, in reference to that buffer.
I agree with that, I think he, it's called a knee jerk reaction, he shouldn't have done a knee jerk.
Well, I just think Well, I, I just think, before we reach out about a buffer that we're unaware of, we should at least have a discussion at the town level, and then go from there.
That property is managed by the town forest. Uh, so, check with town forest and the warranty.
Our transfer station.
No, 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 I, I think, the, the fact that he jumped, didn't have any discussion with selectmen, didn't have any discussion with town forest, didn't have any discussion with town administrator, that's the issue.
Is, you're reaching out to an agency, and we don't even know what's going on, what he's reaching out about. Is a buffer required for the transfer station, is a buffer required for town forest, what did he reach out about?
Right, that was, he should, he should have talked to us before he just runs up to the state. That's, I guess the.
It may be something we don't wanna reach out about.
Right, right.
The opening a can of worms with it.
Right, so, I just wanna think things through.
Yeah.
And not have a bunch of people reacting all by themselves, and, you know, there's three of us here for a reason, let's use it.
You could have ego on your face after.
Yeah.
Or, we have a requirement that we didn't know of, and then we have to act on it.
And add a buffer ourselves, so.
Okay, um, that's, uh, that, I'm gonna put that on a separate pile, that's another issue we're gonna have to talk, there's other issues about the transfer station we need to talk about. Okay, um, just, uh, the skid steer had a problem this week, then it came back up, so that's enough, why, because dude, maintenance brought it back up.
It looks like it was.
Wasn't until?
So, six, six-two, this, uh, six.
June?
Yeah, and then, two days later, it was repaired and it's running. I have a request for a town employee for some leave, I denied that already.
Okay, good.
You know, but I did sign, just, that was just a little bit of humor. Okay, um, then we got a, um, if you recall, we've had some issues with the, uh, the building inspector. Uh, he put a letter of resignation in, I have an email from him, uh, or, excuse me, before I go there, I, I, he, we, the person we were gonna hire withdrew his interest, withdrew his application, and didn't wanna, uh, come work for us. Uh, Mike Cummings, our building inspector, current one, he's expressed a written desire to stay on in, as an employment, as, as a town building inspector and code enforcement officer. So, he's asked to rescind his letter dated May fifth, with notification of leaving the town. He's not missed any, any time, we're taking leave since that date, and, uh, he needs to have an opinion from us if we wanna have him continue.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept his, uh, new letter and, um, his new letter, to withdraw his original, um, decision to leave the town of Dunbar and go, go off on another job, so, uh.
I'll second that motion, and I'll open it up for discussion in just a minute. Uh, the only thing I, I, I liked, I told Don, I told him, I had also told him that, um, we were requiring two and a half days of this other gentleman, and I told him, we're gonna open it up for two and a half days, and it's subject to man, management, some days will be two days, some days will be three days, depending on the week, but an average of two and a half days per week, and, uh.
I think, I think that's fine, because that's in their budget, and that's, uh, not.
They were planning for that.
They were planning for that because of our work coming up, so, I'm gonna agree with that.
And I also, uh, I also talked to Michael, there was a, uh, issue about pay, I said, we're not budgeted for a pay re, pay raise as such, I said, however, I'd be open to listen at the, during the budget season, and, uh, but at this time, we're not gonna entertain motions or discussion on budget, on pay raises or anything like that at this time.
Okay. I wanna make sure that we all understand too, that the building inspector is responsible for his hours.
Yes.
All right.
So he can adjust his hours based on the workload?
Yeah. Okay, and, uh, motion's on the table, I seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Dave, you asked me that, so I, the next item is about the, uh, we've had no new applications for the transfer station, you asked me that information, and I had Erickson an email out to everybody.
Okay.
And, uh, now the thing is, we've been advertising for the transfer station attendant, and one of the ideas that Dave brought up a couple, uh, several months ago, that we take it off, then reinsert it a week later, is new, to get some interest.
Are we on attendant now, and not?
We're, we are on the assistant right now.
We're on the assistant, let's go back to the attendant, I guess, and pull that one off.
Okay.
Just so we keep swapping them, and see if we get some new activity.
Agreed. Speaking of, uh, public, uh, there's an email from, uh, the state that, um, just to let everyone know that we, when we say first responders, we always think of police department, fire department, but our public works employees have been categorized as first responders for the, for, 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 for future activities, just administrative change.
Next one is for the school.
Yes, um, just, uh, with, uh, we just thought we let, uh, the school, Clem from the school board let us know that the, uh, Mr. Owen of the, uh, school board, he's as, uh.
Owen Harrington, the principal.
The principal, is departing, and, uh, at the end of this school year, and, uh, they're already, they're on a search committee right now, looking for a replacement, they hope to have replacement by the end of the month. I thought Owen was great to work with, I thought he was easy to work with, and, um, we'll miss him, but I think he's, uh, he's on to a different job.
He's going to work for the S.A.U. still, so he'll still be reachable.
Right, he's gonna be in curriculum instruction. Folks, job hunters out there looking for a, looking for a nice position in the, the, the school, go for it, the search committee's looking for people. Lean, you can't do it, I'm sorry, you know, and I'm letting you go. All right, um, this one I should let Justin and Dave read, but the thing is, um, we have a problem with mice in our town.
There's more mice.
At the police department, yeah, not in this building, thank God. And so, uh, Lean reached out to, uh, got some, uh, same company that we used, and the police department will be making appropriate, uh, notifications of that.
So, well, there is a quote in there, um, if the board.
Do we have to approve that?
It's an expense from our building maintenance, and we're monitoring our expenses closely.
Uh, the thing is, I'll, I'll read it then, the thing is, I'll make a motion that we accept the bid of two hundred ninety-five dollars for setup, and then ninety-five dollars per quarter for, to last twelve months, for the Manadok Pest Wildlife Service to control mice and rats at the police and fire department.
Any rats, let's second that.
Let's discuss that.
Let's see, maybe second it, have a discussion, all favor, aye?
No, no, the thing is, uh, how much do we pay?
Same amount.
Same amount, yep.
Because that's just the most, rat, no insect.
Right, uh, the thing is, uh, can we forbid people eating in the building, and that would take care of that? No, the thing is, uh, I, I have no other discussion, any other discussion, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, I'll let them know we can schedule that.
Okay, transfer station again, I told you we had several things about transfer stations, and some of these, uh, uh, it's inter, they're interesting. We have chipmunks chewing the building and getting into the recycling center, so we have to do something with chipmunks down there now. Okay?
Good luck, good luck, there's a ton of them this year.
But, the thing is, these are just some of the things, uh, you know the clear windows we put in? We're getting complaints, but the clear windows are allowing too much sunlight to come in, and so, it basically is cooking the employees as they're trying to do their job.
Does he have fans here?
That's what I was thinking, let me use the fans, otherwise, we take out the windows and seal it all up. Now, I say that, I say that.
It's got only one, how many have?
No, there's like four down the length.
I, I'd say. I'd say run the fans.
Those sprays, spray paint on top of them?
Do they have a, a door that, at one end that they could open to get across?
They have those all over there, and they have fans running there.
Okay.
I can't imagine it changed that much from a translucent panel to a clear panel, either way, but.
But I'd say just run the fans and see how that works, gentlemen, consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Woody was asking about new employees, uh, we have none, so we know about that, and Woody's taken off a couple, uh, a couple weeks in July, wants to. We have a non-public offer today?
Yes.
Uh, to talk about, uh, employee, uh, positions of the transfer station in non-public today, okay, gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'll put that, rest of that on hold. Okay, we have the bond rate for the, uh, an update on the, um, for the, for the highway department, for the road bond. It seems like it's coming in, uh, for one point, one million one hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred, has a true interest of two point six-three percent. I, I still say it's a, it's a decent rate.
What was our bond rate that we heard from the voters?
Uh, one point five.
One point five-four, right?
Uh, and then we said that there was a possibility that it was gonna be at one point four, but that was still, that was the February, excuse me, January rates, um, so it was a.
We have approximately one percent increase.
That's a large increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, total interest over the ten years is a hundred and forty-four thousand, instead of a hundred and thirty-three originally.
Yeah. Here's what it is, but it might change some of people's opinions when we come back for another bond, if we ever do another road bond.
Well, just look what our interest rates are today, I mean, it's not, and the thing is, it's going one way, uh, the thing is, could, could Woody have gotten a cheaper rate last year? Yeah, but we weren't ready last year, remember?
We have to sign that paper.
No, this is FYI.
No, this is just a notice of the bond rates.
Even last.
This is a discrepancy.
Yeah, and we've, we've had, rushed it, rushed it to get a move, because the interest rates.
Yeah, my little top of this, this rate, I was saying six, but I'll check on it.
I still think it's a bargain, but the thing is, it's gonna be a challenge, so.
Did, can I see the paper behind that?
Sure.
The best, the second paper on that says five point one for, yeah, for some reason, I don't know why that is, if you look at the second sheet, Dave.
Where is the bond rate itself?
Well, it says it on that front sheet, but then if you read the second sheet, it's, it's right there.
Here, turn your. Because when we went to the voters, we were saying one and a half percent was the true, was what we estimated, and then, right before we went to that vote, we had a bond rate that we had just received from them.
It went up like one point one-eight, or something like that?
That's right, but the warrant article is written to let the board negotiate and decide at the time that the rates are available on behalf of the town, and that's the way it is, we come to the voters with an estimate, and what we're hoping and projecting.
I know, but we have a true bond rate at that rate.
Yes, no, no, but it was a true bond rate, it was, it was a, it was the going rate at that day, that day, or that day, the thing's.
It should have been February.
Yep, and they don't, the, the bond rates are, are adjusted in January, which we had the one point four, and then in June, so this is where we're at.
Can you get that letter out?
For the.
That showed the bond rate?
Yep.
I wanna read the paragraph of the state here.
Yeah, but we had, um.
Because what they do to set that bond rate, is they tally the proposed bonds that they're gonna have.
Right.
Then the towns go to vote, some may get it, some may not.
Right.
Okay, and then they come to you with your true rate later.
And that's what we have.
So, this bond rate to be increased this much, a lot of towns didn't pass their bond issues, is what I'm thinking, but I just want clarification of that.
So you want the letter, that, and the email that talked about the one point four seven or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna understand, so somebody from the public answers us.
I think we all should be on, uh, be up to speed on this one.
Because what happens is, that was their estimated bond rate, the applications they had, that were gonna be on warrant articles, so, um, my thought is, a lot of warrant articles didn't pass through towns, so then they're actually asking for a smaller amount of bond money, which would increase the rate.
Oh, you think that's what happens?
No, I think that could be part of it, I think the other part is, interest rates did go up across the board.
They went up, and we, on a bond rate, we had, I'm pretty sure that was a fixed bond rate unless they didn't pass.
No, no.
No, no, that was only an estimate.
That was an estimate.
That's going, I remember that, in, in other words, you don't, you don't get, it was the Jan, it was the January.
So, if you read the way the warrant was written, it says that we, it didn't have a rate in the bond, in the warrant article, it said that it leaves the selectmen negotiating power to act on the town's behalf if this passes.
Pull the letter out for me.
I will.
Because we had a one and a half percent estimate, and then we went down from that at the meeting.
Yeah, I think, uh, Justin should be brought to speed, so.
Yeah, I just wanna read it, so I can understand, so the voter asks.
Okay, um, I'd like to commend Mike, the Cummings, the building inspector, I'm moving on to the next subject, he, uh, when a call came in this morning about the, uh, the water in the library, he immediately went over there, assisted, uh, uh, gave contact to people, and assisted, uh, meet the, uh, uh, contractors out there, and working with Mary to mitigate some of the water incoming. So, thank you, and he made a documentation, I need everyone to read, but, um, I don't see any damage, I just see water that penetrated the building, and I just think we have to continue to monitor that, and, uh, the only thing, Dave, I'd be concerned at this point, are the wood floors, a little bit, that's the only thing I'd see that would be damaged. And, and as you pointed out, the plaster.
The painting out.
Yeah, so we just, uh, uh, we have an insured contractor, and we get some documentation and pictures, so.
I'll make sure when they're painting that addition, they paint that room there.
Exactly, so thank you, Mike, to, uh, for that information. Okay, I have a little tip that someone gave me today. As I recall.
Um, um.
She was found outside there.
That's right, and you can see that the, the truck is leaving, it's the excavator truck, and she's trying to reach out to you earlier to see if you can reach them.
Do you know, can you find out who that was?
Yeah, I thought she would have been given to Bobby to give to him, no?
No, um, she, but she, she would like you to confirm that they, in fact, lost some money, and if they know the dollar, that the amount that was lost, and.
The amount is in there, so.
Do you want me to leave it in the cash box for now, or?
It was only twenty dollars or something.
No, 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 it was more. I think five thousand.
You can, I'll have, stop by and see you at the office.
That works, that's perfect, thank you.
That sounds good. Can you go, Lean, now, I don't want to take it home. Okay. And, all right, remember that skid steer plow we had? We have, we have a new truck with a new plow, uh, and we were gonna, we gave, uh, basically guidance to, uh, Woody to basically put the, uh, plow on the internet to sell, and, and, uh, he's had only one inquiry, and he has an offer of fifteen hundred. He listed it for seventeen fifty, the question is, he, he wants to give the, a green light from the board to sell it, or just direction of which way we wanna go with that? And I'm open up for discussion.
I'm gonna let you to discuss, I'm gonna abstain.
Why's that?
On the offer.
Then, then the end of the subject, end of, okay. All right, it was brought up to me, someone said, do, uh, do we keep that as a, as a spare for the, uh, for the skid steer? I mean, we have a brand-new truck with a brand-new s, new track, a new plow, and why do we need to have a backup? It just sits here and clicks rust.
I can't imagine keeping up.
That's the folder from the original purchase of the skid steer.
Okay.
And the parts that are included with it now are part, were part of the original, we purchased it in two thousand and seven.
Correct.
So, when employed, you can see the breakdown of.
All right, just to let you know, how much did we pay for that plow? Snow plow, we paid, uh, snow plow, we paid twenty-eight hundred dollars for it, we're getting over half our value of it.
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven.
Don't talk too much, he's gonna change his bid. I said, don't say too much, he's gonna change his bid.
I wanna drop my rate now, but I, I, I heard today they go up to like eight, nine thousand dollars now at all.
Yeah, I think it's been lowered on and stuff like that, so.
I'd say we, uh.
I'm fine, we'll settle.
Yeah, I am too.
All right, give him a look, he's so.
You guys wanna buy half of it?
Can we rent it back if we need to?
I thought we got a good deal, not a.
They made him better back then, Dave, think of it that way.
Not good enough for Woody to keep.
Okay, moving on, moving on, we, we hired an, uh, an old, an older player, we hired it back as an office administrator for the, uh, for the police department. We need to assign these, that's an action we already moved on, and moved out on. It says the pay rate, we almost, Justin, you just passed out the lead when we're done.
You signed both copies, or two?
I did, see if I signed both, I think I did too. Yes?
Yep.
Good.
We're getting used to it, we did enough of them early.
I tell ya. Okay, we have some, um, twenty-twenty post census group quarterly review, Lean, tell me what that's about.
Uh, I think they're just notifying us that the, uh, numbers have been put in there, um, if you log into their website with a secret passcode, you can review what they have, and they, you feel that there's, uh, a real big discrepancy that you can make some requests to.
Could you, can you log in?
I have not tried to log in.
Okay, could you ask Jo Marie, see if she can log in, I just wanna get the population of the town. Okay, could you ask Joe Marie to see if she can log in, I just wanna get the population of the town.
I don't think that that information is exactly what is there, I can't recall, but.
Just out of curiosity.
Yep.
Dave, would you read, I don't know.
I would like to know our population as well, for accuracy.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the thing is, not a high priority, I have a drop everything and do. But the thing is, I, if some, that's something Joe Marie, who's pretty good at the internet, so you could.
That's a Friday job.
A Friday job.
Okay.
Gentlemen, all agreement, consensus?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have an rebuttal notice. For wetland application, or, letter, this letter's being sent to you, required by New Hampshire Department of Services, Water Division Wetland Program to inform you that, uh, our Ann Lamar family are a revocable trust applying to the Department of Wetland for permission to construct a driveway that will cross a wetland to access a buildable upland area, and above reference property.
That was a property that went through the planning board while it was on.
Yep.
Took a long time, but it's just a notification, I have no issue with that. Any issues needed?
They don't typically get denied from a residential house slot, so.
Okay, last item in the mailbox. Are we gonna start doing votes?
I am, I'm not sure, there's a lot of paragraphs on that if you wanna read through it, but the very end references boat registration, so.
So, uh, we're gonna be able to do boat registration here?
I don't know, you may have to after it, ask the town clerk.
Okay, could you, it, it is addressed to the town clerk?
That one was to the, the town of Dunbar, you mean.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to just get a readout from her when she gets the application.
Sure.
All right, that's the end of my, uh, inbox, I'm gonna basically go to bubble comment again. Bob, hey.
I got a couple of things.
Please.
One of them is, uh, when you're talking about delicate things, and I'll use, like, lost or found money.
Yes.
You may not wanna talk about the amount in front of the camera, so that's just, again.
Can we just on fingers?
But the other one is, uh.
And once, for the record, it wasn't five thousand dollars, that was obscure the, the knowledge.
Uh, the other thing is, I had, I've looked at what the increases are so far, and you're tracking a little over six percent as of May first for wage increases in the state of New Hampshire.
Yes, we knew small boys.
Just to keep that in the back of your mind.
We knew small boys, so across the board.
That, that's, right now, that's across the board, that's the average increase in New Hampshire. Now, that doesn't count service, 'cause service, if you look at that, that's gone to like seventeen percent, so.
We have some discussions on that later tonight, so that'll help.
So, you know, wh- when it comes time in the fall, if you want, I can get something in print for you guys to look at.
Bob, you're always a good source for that, we'd be looking forward to that. Anything else?
That should do it.
Yeah? Okay, I'll bring it back to the town administrator.
Um, I do have a couple of things. Um, I gave the board the summer schedule for twenty twenty-two, and I'm asking the board to consider scheduling, uh, date for the workshop on the personnel policy, and, um, a fee schedule for a public hearing. Whereas, uh, some of the departments are, have, um, shown interest that they would like the board to review their current rates, and in order to have a fee schedule, you have the public hearing.
And fee schedule would be such as, um, what we do detail work, what we charge in the transfer station, and.
Copies, vehicle registration fees.
Across the board.
Across the board, yeah.
We do that on a regular meeting night?
Yep, we absolutely can.
We could.
Yeah. I would like to give them enough time to do their research, for example, this past week, it must be that time of the year, I've gotten five emails from, um, neighboring towns, which I will pass on to Woody, and probably develop a spreadsheet for him of, uh, five different towns and their fee schedules for the transfer station, so that way you are.
You can have a basis that we establish.
Yep.
I know the police department is, was concerned about their details, yeah.
Yep, and we're looking to make some changes.
And then you, and your in-house copies and all that kinda stuff, too?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We can do that.
Well, we can do a fee schedule, I think we could probably discuss it on a, one of our regular meetings in July. I was gonna say, you wanna pencil in the twenty-first for the fees.
That works for me.
Okay. Now, the other thing is, we, we do a personnel plan review. There's ver- various items in the personal plan, and, uh, we review on an annual basis. Sometimes it can go an hour, sometimes it may be one to two hours.
Yeah.
And I would, I'd like to do it maybe during the day, uh, daylight hours, but I wanna.
End of June?
Or early July, after the fourth.
It can't be the end of June, I'm off the end of June, or, and we, no, but, um.
I'm thinking maybe the.
I do wanna get you guys a fi- a copy, each of you, to take home, so you can highlight, flag different sections that you want to bring up and discuss. That might shorten your meeting, so that you're doing it on your own, and you're presenting, uh.
And a- anything that you can recall, uh, the bullet, bullet points of where we were at shortcomings.
I know one thing we wanna do is update our COVID policy with the new state guidelines.
Right, well.
Yeah, yeah, and then there was the travel allowance, the town clerk had requested, um, if that's to be implemented, it probably should be across the board.
Yeah.
So if you can get bullet items, so we can, as you prepare that.
Small thing, a recommendation, but.
All right, I'm thinking, uh, middle of July, what do you think, gentlemen? Pick the date, or, I don't wanna take any Wednesday.
I can have the personnel policy in, for each of you at, or your next meeting, then if you have, I mean, could do it on the same day as the fee schedule?
No, I, I don't wanna, I wanna do it outside, I wanna do it outside of a, uh.
Do it on a Wednesday, like the thirteenth or something.
That's what I'm thinking.
Let's do it one of the weeks we're meeting already, so either the sixth or the twentieth.
You wanna do it on the sixth? Is that too soon, Lean?
Well, the fourth, we're closed.
Okay, let's do it on the twentieth then?
Okay.
Twentieth?
Workshop.
What time?
What, gentlemen, you work for a living, I, I'm retired, what do you, what?
We get like the two P M, so we're on our own.
Two P M, two to four, two P M.
And, uh, one of the departments has requested to be present, 'cause he wants to present his recommendations, so the personnel policy changes for you to consider, so I will notify them.
Could you extend that invitation to anyone who has recommendations for a personal plan, to all the supervisors, uh, please send them by email to you?
Yep.
I don't wanna be blindsided and have a, um, I, I wanna be, uh, have knowledge ahead of time of what we may be discussing, so, so send an email out, the question that this, I just be discussed, please identify it, so we at least be, uh, aware of what we're gonna be discussing.
Let me put it in my calendar here.
And just so you, I'm looking at this, this, for some reason, this Excel program occasionally does not strike out dates, so I noticed that the fourth of July on a Monday, it was not struck out, so I wrote through there, but then you are actually off on the thirtieth of June, and I see that there's no line, so, that's, um, we have no meeting next week, and the week after we have a meeting, the thirtieth, you guys are off, so, don't look at that calendar as a given, we won't be here.
Okay, so, the twentieth, two P M.
Twenty, July twentieth.
The twenty-first will be during our regular meeting.
Right, that's a public hearing, though, so that's gonna be noticed.
And, yeah, I'll have to do seven days notice, yeah.
But I, I do require a, the, an agenda for the, from all the depart- anyone who is concerned about the personal plan, I'm opening up to any department chair.
Yep, I will send them, I'll send up, this is a.
As I've always said, it's a living document, it can be changed as needed. Hopefully, once a year. All right, anything else, Lean?
Um, our auditors were in the building this week for a couple of days to, uh, finalize, um, what they needed to complete the audit, we're in a really good place. He said he's probably looking at half a day, one person, uh, just for a few either outstanding items, like connecting with the library and a few, um, vendor checks, so.
Will he prepare a report and visit us and prepare?
Absolutely, yeah.
Wait, I'm saying a verbal presentation like in the past, okay.
Yep, that's always a requirement.
Okay. What timeframe?
Um, they're ahead of schedule, so we're probably looking at September sometime.
Okay, great. Justin, just to let you know, the auditors, uh, they'll take, they, they, basically, they look at magnifying glass, they've got our documents, our bills, and.
Policies, just lacking of policies, and.
And then they come up with recommendations, and it's usually, it's very constructive, it's all constructive criticism, and they present usually, uh, the highlights to us in a, in a, like, a a public hearing in a, one of our regular meetings. Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, that's a.
Okay, I'm gonna take it to Justin.
I don't know.
Okay, Dave?
Um, I have something for Lean, we talked quite a while back, um, maybe four or five minutes ago. The bottom of this, lower part behind the windows is starting to chip pretty substantial.
Oh, he came in this week, as a matter of fact.
Oh, good.
I contacted him twice.
Yeah.
Uh, he returned my call, and then he checked in just Monday or Tuesday this week, and said, I just wanna let you know that we have work in the area. I haven't forgotten you, uh, we'll make sure that we inspect the entire building and repair anything that needs to be.
Oh, perfect.
Yep.
I'd like to have, um, and this we may get charged for, but around those two front entryways, check where they tacked up the, um, strapping and stuff, to make that buffer out there, I'd like to look at that.
On the front porticoes, is it?
Yes, yeah, remember they covered that all with the plastic to, to pour this concrete?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, got it.
So there's all kinds of holes.
Oh, he may, he may, he may have those small holes where they tap.
Yeah, I'd just like to make him take a look at it, and.
Mr. Town.